For the late delay this evening, we had a great presentation by our subcommittee on affordable housing and homelessness this evening, and we started at 5:30, and that took us a little after 6:30, and then we went in just to prepare for this meeting. So, sorry that we're late. And so, this evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 13, 2017 City Council, and I will open the meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Council President Kelly Menke will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. We are to that point in our meeting this evening where we will invite citizens for public comment, and anyone in the audience may speak on any topic other than a topic that's already on the agenda this evening, a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use manner, matter or matters scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. And I may limit the duration of those comments dependent upon my direction. So, anyone that would like to address the council this evening? Go ahead, come up and sign your name, and put your address down, and again, state your name, and then address the council.
Any one of these papers in particular?
Yeah, I think, yeah, just that one that's right in...
Okay. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Beverly McBee, and I have put down my address as an Arizona driver address because that is where my husband and I live full-time. But the issue that I want to bring up is a terrible weed control at here on 960 Monterey Drive here in McMinnville that is owned by us, and we back up to a home that I have been working with Pam Ramsey for a year on. They have weeds that are roof high, they go all the way around the house, and she has been working with them, and she's gotten all kinds of excuses, I understand. And there's been nothing cut in years. And now the blackberries are blooming, and we have them, everything come over our fence, and under the fence, and knockboards off of the fence. And it's gone to be a terrible problem, and I know we're only one of three neighbors that are suffering with the same thing. And so, I was really wondering if perhaps we might be able to get some assistance through the board. And the address of that home is 960 Cypress Street. And Pam has been out to that home, she has taken pictures, she's seen it, she has come to our home, to the backyard, and she has taken pictures and seen it as well. So, she's fully aware of what we're dealing with, but it seems as though she needs more assistance than what she is being able to do on her own. It's a real, it's a real eyesore, and it's also a real shame because these people are not living in the country somewhere, they're in the city. And so, anyway, my request is perhaps we could get some assistance to have this terrible mess cleaned up, and then hopefully it would stay that way. We'll keep our fingers crossed anyway. So, I thank you for your time.
Beverly, thank you for coming before us, and I know, you know, Pam does all she can, but Chief, if you could maybe just look into that?
Yeah, that's a property that we're already well aware of, and we've actually had some meetings with the city attorney and our code enforcement. It's, it is on a high agenda, it's high on our agenda to get into court, candidly. They are not seeking, or like you had said, to fix or remedy the situation, so it's in the, it's going to be coming, I'm sure, before municipal court, in which time I know we'll have some sort of a solution, hopefully. These things take a long time, like you had said, a year, and that's unfortunately not uncommon in situations where the property owners are not willing to participate in resolving the situation with us. So, be assured that it is on our radar, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Beverly. Anyone else that would like to address? Dan, go ahead.
I already signed in.
Okay.
All right, I just have a short comment. I don't know who or how else I would present my complaint, except to you and the City Council chambers. My complaint is this, I tried to call Adam Gavin several weeks ago to straighten something out. So, I left a voice message, and he said he'd call back, but he never did. So, the next day, I called him, and left another message on his answering machine, and still, he didn't return my call. I wanted him to clarify a statement he made to me. He had told me that the city of McMinnville had given the zero-waste gang $2,000. So, I wanted him to make sure that was the correct amount. But he didn't return my calls, so then I had to resort to getting that information through the Freedom from Information Act, and Melissa graciously complied and gave me that information. So, it turns out, according to that information, that the city of McMinnville actually gave the zero-waste gang $10,000. Now, I'm not going to resort to acrimonious imputations against Mr. Gavin, but it turns out that he gave me false information. I don't think that, he was very courteous in not returning my calls either. In my opinion, I don't think that he is fit to be serving on your council. His heart is not into this important task of serving the public.
Thank you, Dan.
That is, that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Dan?
I did try and return your call multiple times, and you don't have a voicemail box set up, so I can't leave a message.
You did?
I did, yes.
Well, I didn't, I have my phone available all the time in my pocket, and I didn't receive any phone calls from you, because I can prove it. I don't have your number on any of the calls that were made to me.
Yes, you originally called over Memorial Day weekend, and I returned your phone call initially Tuesday following Memorial Day weekend.
You did?
Yes.
Well, if you did, then I apologize.
I appreciate the conversation, and as far as zero waste goes, any money that was given by the city was before my time as a counselor, so I'm not privy to the exact amounts of that.
Okay, well, that clears it up.
Thank you, Dan.
Could Adam now serve on the council? Are you happy now?
Sorry.
What?
Not that I'm being snarky, I'm having one of those days.
Any other comments from citizens? Mark?
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I'm going to take advantage of the mayor's request, and any comments on the affordable housing meeting that preceded this, that comments be made now. I'll keep it short. I appreciated Alan's report on inclusionary zoning, I thought it was interesting. I would support, as, you know, I think what he said was reasonable, but I would support applying that to the urban renewal area, like he suggested, and in addition, any new areas that are added into the urban growth boundary. In other words, make it something going forward, so that the current property that's within our, you know, boundaries is exempt, other than the urban renewal, which we're sticking tax dollars into. The other comment I would have is, in code review, I would really like to see the R5 zone brought back. I don't know whether, some of you remember the UGB fiasco, but that was one of the few good things I thought that came out of that. Unfortunately, we lost that also. The R5 was an exclusive multifamily housing zone, and so I would hope that we would look again to do that. The problem with the R4 zone is that other types of housing can be built in it, and in fact, were. The city had a lot of R4 zone land, you know, in the 1980, 81 original designation, but that land was lost to other uses. So, I'd like to see something designated strictly to affordable, to multifamily housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? JW?
Hi, Mayor and members of the council. JW Meligan, 624 Northeast Second Street, about four blocks from here. I was surprised to hear of the city's complete upfront waiver of the $100,000 system development charges on the Atticus Hotel until it's actually completed. I don't know if that's ever been done before. But I also was informed by the city that they're working on the criteria that the hotel has to meet, and that the public could have input on that process. And I have not heard back yet from the city manager or the planning director. I just wondered if the mayor or the council knows when the public will have an opportunity to comment on the criteria that the grant has to meet. Thank you.
Have there any thoughts as it goes through our urban renewal group?
Yeah, so the development agreement will go back into MURAC for final consideration and approval, based on the resolution that was adopted. The discretion lies at the city manager as to whether, how, if it goes further than that, but the MURAC meetings are open to the public.
And so, to answer the very, the specific question for public comment, would that be done at our MURAC committee meeting, which is on the first Wednesday of every month at 4 o'clock over at the community development office, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, will it be next month, then?
We're, we're still working on it, so when it's final, that's, that's when, final draft form, it will go to them. I'm not, I can't guarantee it will be the July meeting for that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, JW. Any other comments from citizens? Hearing none, then we will move, move forward. We are to that point in our, our agenda tonight that we have a presentation from, from Fred Stemler of Recology, and so Fred, if you would come up and, and anyone that is with you, thank you. Good to see you.
Good evening. Fred Stemler, 1850 Lafayette Avenue with Recology, Western Oregon.
Amanda Harris, same.
Amanda's our customer service manager. I asked her to come along tonight, or she volunteered to, so. We didn't make the agenda tonight, so I will try and summarize why we're here, and then certainly if there's any questions. So, every July 1st, we go through our rate review process. We essentially look backwards and forwards and determine what we've done, what are anomalies, what are we going to repeat, and essentially assign a rate review that we project our costs moving forward, and then apply it to the franchise. So, last year, the board took a bold step forward and added yard debris and glass for all of McMinnville's residents and businesses, and with that came a commitment to go through a three-year review process to essentially fold that into the overall business. So, that was a five-year rate, a 5% rate adjustment that took effect last year. And this year again, we are projecting a 5% rate adjustment to the rates in order to cover the costs of these new programs, as well as all the rest of the business. So, with that, our most common services are 96 gallon weekly service, that would be a $1.77 increase to 37.22. Every other week, 96 is our second most popular, that's a $1.15 to push it to 24.20. With these new services, we've seen a lot of people migrating off of, say, 90 gallon weekly, 96 gallon weekly service, and eligible to move into this every other week. So, in that case, customers that would move, be applicable here, drop $13 per month on their bill. So, there's quite a significant offset for anybody who's participating with the yard debris recycle and glass options that are now available to mitigate any of these cost increases. So, that's the big news that I wanted to come and present forward here. And then also field any questions as far as service goes, really, any topics, fair game.
So Fred, you know, as we brought into, to play last year, glass pickup, the recycling of glass at the curbside, what, what percentage of, of your clients are participating in, in the glass, and what percentage now have grown to yard debris and disposable foods that could be mixed with that?
Yes, the type 1 compost essentially is, the way I describe it is if you can grow it, you can throw it. So, anything that's not processed food, meats, bones, the bones, dairy, processed food are excluded from this, this compost. But to your question, we have, I think the last report, we have over 4,000 customers that are signed up with yard debris program, and over 3,000 with glass. We are sending hundreds of carts out to the community every single week now that spring is upon us and the heat is coming. Yards are, we started out very strong in the glass side of things. So, in the next year, I think we're going to push well over 60% of the city with all of these programs.
Great to hear.
Yeah, it's, it's wonderful to see these products not going into the landfill, so we're, we're happy about that.
And also to see you as a company listening to us and moving very quickly on that, knowing that it is a tiered process, and with rate, and also usage.
Yeah, well, thank you. We, we strove to even get it out quicker than that, so we appreciated the patience. But yeah, we're doing everything we can to, to continue the growth of these programs. So, we appreciate any support that, and word of mouth that you can spread as well to let the community know.
What I'll do is, any questions, again, usually we, we have the rate sheets that we would have in front of us, but we did again last year have the discussion about looking at that tiered approach. So, Adam, to my left, any questions for Fred?
No questions as far as rates go. I did want to comment that the compostables and the glass is very nice to have in the garage, other than it gets, makes me do yard work on Sunday, because Greenland's is no longer a factor. But yeah, it's been great to have, and it definitely cuts down on the trash.
Yeah, Greenland's is open anytime you want to go back as well. The drop-off is still an option.
Visit your friends out there, you know?
And how, how are you coming on the transfer station?
The transfer station is set to be about July, is when will be done. I'm guessing July, August at this point. We had a few delays, but it's progressing well. I think, I think it's fair to say August, the latest.
Okay, thank you.
The first question I have is about the pickup days. It seems like in my neighborhood, especially at my house, there's a lot of guesswork as to what goes out of the curb what time. Do you have any tools on your website to help people know when it's their turn to put the glass and compost out? Because those aren't picked up every week or every other week, it's once a month, if I, if I remember right?
Yes, glass is once a month, yard debris is every other week.
And if you live in McMinnville, it'd be the same as your recycle week for your yard debris?
The first or the second time. That's every other week as well?
The yard debris is every other week.
Oh, okay, and the glass is just once a month?
Correct.
The same time, okay.
Yes, we have calendars available as well. If you want to give me your email address, I'll email you one.
Okay, I've been duped so many times, my neighbors put theirs out, I'm like, oh, must be the time, and I put it out, and it doesn't get picked up, so I...
Yeah.
I'm doing a lot of guesswork.
The calendar is on our website.
They sent one out in one of your mailings?
Yeah.
And that you got to keep, because it was a one-time thing, but it is on the website.
On the customer service guides that are sent to every residence, that the, the calendar is on there. It, it is not, not the easiest, but we, we try our best. So, if you put some, if you put some dedicated effort, or if you call us, we can walk you through, essentially how to interpret that as needed. The calendar is also available for download on our website, so if you go in and you drop in your, if you drop in your zip code into the Find My, Find My Company, it's, there's a little trash can, that's a good indicator that you're in the right spot. Click on there, drop your zip code, you'll get routed over to the McMinnville page, and look on the equivalent of about a FAQ, frequently asked questions tab, or useful resources, I can't remember the exact terminology there, and the maps are available.
Okay, I just need to start transferring this to my calendar.
Calendar.
While I got my phone, because if it buzzes at me, I'll do it.
So, I, I definitely endorse that. I have the exact same thing for my pickups.
Just forward me the calendar, and I'll put...
I'll give you, we'll take care of you.
The second issue I have, I'm not sure you're aware, but a couple weeks back, I introduced a draft resolution that would bar any future garbage from McMinnville going to Riverbend, and I was wondering if you could, if you've seen it, if you, or if you could comment on your preparedness to go someplace else if you decided to do that.
The topic has been discussed, I have not read the resolution myself. I have been following what happened in Metro, the recent decision that was there. We'll, we'll be prepared for whatever direction is mutually agreed upon, and if it's, if it's not Riverbend, I have, for five years now, four years of the, almost six years I've been here, I've been in constant contact with landfills all over the state of Oregon and Washington. So, when the time's ready to move, we'll be ready to do it.
All right, thanks, Fred.
Yep.
Kelly, I'll end up with you. Alan, any comments or thoughts?
My questions got answered, Frank. Thanks, Fred.
Okay, no problem.
Remy?
Thank you.
Okay.
Great news.
No problem.
Wendy?
My question got answered, too. Thank you for all your work.
All right.
Exciting.
Council President?
Actually, a lot of revelations tonight for me, too, so I must have missed the card that came out initially, but I will definitely go to your website and check it out.
Yep, and don't hesitate to call or send in rwinfo@recology.com. We're, we're pretty quick to reply there as well.
Thank you so much for the information tonight.
Yeah, happy to.
David?
When you get home tonight, put out your yard debris in your recycling can. Next week is glass.
I have to get a recycling can.
I actually have the calendar.
It is available on mobile.
We will be bringing this back to the council next week for consent agenda, just with the rate sheets. Apologize for not having gotten it into the packet for you tonight.
Thank you, Fred.
And feel free, if, if you need us back for any clarification, anytime, we'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I will tip the hat to you. We're getting non-stop inquiries for these services, and all around from Sheridan, Carlton, even Astoria just followed your lead and did glass and yard debris, too. So, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight, we have three public hearings, and so, I'm going to open a public hearing on the proposed budget as approved by the Budget Committee. So, I'll go ahead and open that public hearing. I'm going to ask for comments on the proposed budget. Anyone have any comments on the proposed budget that was brought to the council by the Budget Committee? Mark? And you brought your book.
Oh, I brought my book. Actually, this is a repeat for all of you who were at the Budget Committee. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. Two things. One is, let's see, get the page number here. Page 151 of 258, I'm talking about the franchise fee for Mack Water and Light. The McMinnville Water and Light budget, which was approved already, has a number of $2,017,658. The budget has $1,850,000. I really think, I mean, I understand conservative budgeting, but I think that's, you know, considerably below what could be considered conservative. And I'd like to, I mean, to me, it's logical that it should be the same number. I mean, you're, you're both entities that are, are part of the city, but you know, even if, if you're not going to go with that, I think you ought to raise it up a little, so it's a little more realistic. And you know, that can go wherever you want. The other comment I want to make is, I'd like to see some money dedicated to affordable housing. I made a suggestion at the Budget Committee that it be part of the lodging tax, based on the, my, my feeling that the visit McMinnville activities have caused some of the, the affordable housing in downtown McMinnville to be converted to higher-end housing for the, the visitors that are being attracted. Therefore, I feel that there's some responsibility that to, you know, or some, some logic for using some of that money to, for the affordable housing program. And I, I don't have a particular suggestion. I mean, certainly you listen to a lot of ideas of, of things that could be used. My, my preference would be that any money the city puts towards, you know, affordable housing or solving the homeless issue, you know, would be leverage money. In other words, the city shouldn't be the one that's out there building or, or providing most of the money, and realistically, the amounts of money available are not that much. But that it should be used as incentives to other developers to, to provide a number of units. And I don't know what, you know, what those incentives are, or how you want to formulate, formulate that, but I would think that would be something that the Homelessness Committee. But I really feel that if, you know, the city is serious about dealing with the issue, there's going to have to be some money put in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And just from my perspective, I think there is some traction at the council level with your comments. I, I think tonight, as we went through the presentation by the Affordable Housing Committee, there's a number of, of things that are on the horizon that will allow us to take a look at, at doing that. I know we, we really, at this particular time, really want to have the flexibility of it going into the general fund to fall into the categories of priority of the council, which homelessness and affordable housing are a high priority. So, that's how I could, I guess, summarize where we're sitting right now.
Okay, thank you. I, I've sensed that you have some interest, and I'm just going to keep asking for something to be formalized, and just, just for the record. Thank you.
What was the page you referenced on your first point?
151.
Thank you.
And being on both of those Budget Committees, Marsha and I will take a look at the, the difference there. But I, I went through the budget at Water and Light, and it is a, quite a different budget than ours, but we'll take a look at that and see what the differential may be. Any other comments as it relates to the budget? Hearing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing on the budget. Okay, we're going to move into a second public hearing on the proposed uses of the state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2017-18 as approved by the Budget Committee. So, I'll go ahead and open up that public hearing. Any testimony from the public on the state revenue sharing, as has been delivered at the Budget Committee, and it is a part of your packets tonight. We're looking at $315,000 split, the revenue coming in, and then our, our proposed uses of that. Again, any public testimony? Hearing none, I'll close that public hearing. And then the last is a public hearing regarding the vacation of a portion... And then the last is a public hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of Northeast Macy Street between Northeast 14th and, uh, 13th, uh, street. Um, and so I'll open that up to anyone that would like to address, uh, the council. Hearing none. I will close that public hearing. Okay. Um, this evening on our consent agenda, we are considering the minutes of August 9th, 2016 and September 6th, 2016. Any counselor would request to have any item moved off of our consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll take a motion.
Aso moved. Second.
Okay, and it's been moved by Council President Menke and seconded by, uh, Counselor Stassenz. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Our consent agenda passes unanimously. Um, we now are to a point this evening where we have, uh, five resolutions in front of us. Um, and resolution, uh, 2017-16 is, uh, or 36, excuse me, uh, 36 is dealing with, uh, appointing representatives to our planning commission from wards two and three. Let me share that , uh, we have gone through our new process of having, uh, a subcommittee of the council do the interviewings for those committee assignments. And if I'm not mistaken, we've had, uh, Council President, uh, Menke and we had Counselor Stassenz and we had, uh, some staff being a part of that. And so I'm going to just turn a brief moment over to Heather to share a little bit in her memo to us on, uh, those openings and then I'll turn it over to Council President Menke.
Great mayor and city councilors. So, um, the city currently has two vacancies, one in Ward Two and one in Ward Three. They're, um, resignations, so people will be filling existing terms. The Ward Two position will expire on December 31, 2019 and the Ward Three position will expire on December 31, 2018. We received two applications for the Ward Two position and three applications for the Ward Three position. You have those in your packet with you. Um, the interview committee did meet and interview all five candidates, um, that applied and then have a recommendation for you this evening. I'll let the councilors talk through what that process was and the recommendation and why they're making that.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel President Menke?
Uh, as Heather said, we met with all five. Uh, we had extensive questions. We ended up, uh, since we had limited time to asking five questions and then they were allowed to ask anything of us or cover any information if they had additional time within the period of time we were interviewing. Uh, we had very qualified people, uh, interview. Uh, I think Wendy and I were quite impressed with them, uh, all of the candidates. Uh, we chose for Ward Two, Mr. Lizut. He has been before us several times. Uh, he's an engineer. He, uh, a systems engineer and he, uh, has has quite a bit of experience on the planning commissions. And we felt, you know, the candidates presenting for Ward Two, that he was our choice. Uh, the other candidate for Ward Three was Mr. Gary Langenwalter. Um, he has extensive experience in dealing in group situations, uh, has an interest in this particular area. And we felt that he would be a good mix, or he would be a good person to deal, to work with on that particular committee. Uh, you wanna add anything, Wendy?
No, I mean, I think you captured it really well. We had really strong applicants and we were really impressed with a lot of, um, what they would offer. But those two happened to be, we felt the best fit at this time. So.
Yes.
And we also, uh, encouraged, contacted some of the other applicants because we thought they were.
We did. I took away two resumes to show to other.
With other committees.
Other committees because I was quite impressed with some of the applicants. So, uh, all in all, it was a great afternoon, very interesting. Um, and these are the two candidates we recommend.
Okay. Given that this is the first time we've used this new methodology, uh, I'm going to go down each of our councils and see if there's any, any questions or concerns before we move forward then. So Alan, I'll start with you.
I don't have any questions or concerns.
Okay. Remy?
Hi. Uh, seeing all the applications, it's just, uh, it's wonderful to have so many, uh, highly qualified individuals applying for these, um, positions. And, uh, I'm very, uh, grateful as well that, uh, Council President took, uh, other applications to other committees because certainly, I, there's a, you know, a general sentiment to keep people involved uh, as, as much as possible. And, um, and certainly there's a need. And then as for the process, um, this, this process and I think the conversations and then the reporting that, that comes back, I, I think the process is far superior to what we had previously been doing. And, um, so I, I applaud the thought that went into that and, and the execution of it.
Yeah, it's a much more relaxed setting too. I think everybody feels more comfortable just kinda having an opportunity to relax and discuss the situation. Yeah.
Remy. Um, Adam, any thoughts or concerns?
I just appreciate that all the candidates had applied and it looked like you guys had ample time to, to sit down and speak with them. And it wasn't such a rushed process, which I think is a process improvement from the last appointments we had. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that.
Thank you. Kevin?
Still coming.
Okay. Um, so, uh, where we're at right now, we've had discussion. Any other further discussion? Again, I would like to thank that our interview committee, I'm liking this process. Um, it's taking it out of, uh, a fairly stressful, uh, opportunity to be in front of us and more of a relaxed. And I think more can be accomplished in a relaxed mode. And, uh, we're able to look very carefully at their resumes. And, uh, again, I would, I would share that as I read phenomenal candidates in every case.
Absolutely.
For both Ward Two and Three. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2017-36, appointing, uh, Roger Lizent, uh, Ward Two and Gary Langenwalter, Ward Three as representatives of the McMinville Planning Commission. Do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It has been moved by, um, Counselor Stassenz and Sec- Rabkin. Thank you, Rabkin. And, uh, and Counselor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Our, our individuals have been, uh, this resolution has passed unanimously. And again, um, if we can follow up on those other opportunities because we've got some committee opportunities for those if they might be interested into that. Resolution 2017-37, a resolution making a budgetary transfer of appropriate authority for the fiscal year 2016-17. So I'll call on our finance director, Marcia, to update us and, uh, start us on our discussion around this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as I explained in my memo, local budget law does allow the governing body to make changes to a budget that has been adopted if, if certain criteria are met. And one of those being that, uh, if circumstances arise that could not be known when the budget was adopted. So this circumstance does meet that criteria. Uh, the total, uh, budget that was adopted for the administration department was 1.1 million. Uh, we're always reviewing our expenditures very closely through the year. At this time, I, uh, am estimating that the administration department expenditures will actually exceed what was budgeted by about 55,000. And there's two reasons for that, um, that are related. One is that, um, when the former city manager resigned in October of 2016, uh, that, uh, some personnel costs were incurred that were not anticipated when the budget was adopted. And also there were materials and services expense or, um, uh, travel, for example, uh, paying travel and lodging for the candidates that came, uh, to apply for the city manager job. So there was expenses related to that also that, uh, were not included in the adopted budget. I wanted to point out also that the total appropriations in the general fund are, in the general fund budget are not being increased. This is a, uh, transfer from contingency. And, uh, so that contingency, uh, pot of money was appropriated or approved to be spent when the budget was adopted. Um, so this resolution allocates 45,000 of that contingency to personal services and the other 10 to materials and services. I did also want to mention that I don't expect that we'll need that entire 55,000. Um, things come up though. I mean, there could be a repair at City Hall. There could be other things that I can't anticipate. So there might be a little bit of cushion in there. Um, so I would, uh, I, staff recommends that the council adopt resolution 2017-37, amending the administration department budget for fiscal year 2016-17.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions from Marcia from the council? Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2017-37, making a budgetary transfer of appropriation, um, authority for fiscal year 2016-2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That was Wendy. Okay. And, and it has been moved by Counselor Stassenz and has been seconded by Council President Menke. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, uh, opposed signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Our next resolution is resolution 2017-38, a resolution awarding the contract for the Fourth Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. That's, uh, project 2015, the 2015-15. Mike, if we could call on you to give us a, an overview of this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet as well as the, uh, draft resolution and project vicinity map for your information. As outlined in the memo, uh, bids for the Fourth Street project were opened on June 1st. Uh, eight bids were received and tabulated. Uh, the low bid from Banzer Construction in the amount of $397,430 was deemed to be the lowest responsible and responsive bid. This project is being funded by 2014 Transportation Bond Proceeds. It's included in the proposed fiscal year 18 budget. Work will happen this summer and be completed by the end of, uh, September, I believe. Uh, uh, unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution awarding the contract to Banzer Construction in the stated amount.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike on, on this resolution? Hearing none. I ask for a motion to approve resolution 2017-38, a resolution awarding the contract for the Fourth Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, project 2015-15. Okay? Second?
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Rudin and, uh, seconded by, uh, Counselor Garvin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Our, uh, our last, um, our second to the last resolution tonight is resolution 2017-39, a resolution approving task order number two to the personal services contract for the design of the Fourth Street Sidewalk Improvement and Pedestrian Safety Improvement Transportation Bond Measure Projects. We talked about this briefly at our dinner meeting, but we'll turn time over to Mike to kind of set the stage for our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, refer you to the staff report that's in your packet as well as the draft resolution and the proposed task order number two to WNH Pacific's contract. They are the design engineer for the Fourth Street Sidewalk bid that you just awarded and for the pedestrian improvements, safety improvements project that you're considering in the following resolution. Uh, this task order includes additional design work to avoid, uh, high-pressure gas line on the Fourth Street project as well as construction engineering and management, uh, retaining wall inspection for the Fourth Street project. And it also includes construction surveying and as-built drawings for the pedestrian work that, uh, you'll be considering in your next resolution. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute task order number two with WNH Pacific.
Any questions for Mike on this resolution? Hearing none. I ask for a motion to approve resolution 2017-39.
So moved.
And a second? Was that cutting?
Second.
Oh, so, um, um, Counselor, uh, Garvin, uh, has, uh, moved and seconded by Counselor Stassenz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any opposed, please signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number 2017-40, a resolution awarding the contract for the Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project, project 2017-5. Uh, we'll call on Mike to, uh, start our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'll refer you to the staff report, resolution and vicinity maps. They're in your packet. On May 25th of this year, uh, bids were open for the Pedestrian Safety Improvements, uh, project. Three bids were received. The bid from Hallworth Incorporated in the amount of $482,658.53 was deemed to be the lowest and, lowest responsible and responsive bid. Again, this is a project funded by 2014 Transportation Bond Proceeds and it's included in the proposed fiscal year 18, um, budget. Work will occur this summer and is expected to be completed before the start of school this fall. Uh, unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution awarding the contract to Hallworth Inc.
Thank you, Mike. I'll just note that in your packet, uh, uh, we've included from the McMinville Transportation Bond, uh, kind of a, uh, uh, map and a, 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 a diagram for where each of these pedestrian, um, um, safety improvement, uh, uh, projects are gonna happen. So any questions for Mike from council? Alan?
Uh, Mike, is there anything, what's going on with the east side of Star Mill? Is there anything at all? Or is it just gonna stay that, that national park on that side?
So the pedestrian safety project as envisioned, uh, with the transportation bond was to complete a continuous sidewalk, um, along Star Mill and Wallace from Second to Michael Book. And the corridor on the west and south sides of, of that corridor was chosen to complete that continuous sidewalk. So there are plans as part of this project to fill in any gaps that are on the opposite side of the street.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I just remembered that I was approached by, uh, a woman who lives on, on the, on the Star Mill Way and she has some large decorative rocks and some plants and stuff that would be impacted by the sidewalk. And she was wondering, uh, she doesn't wanna have to move them herself. Wondering how they would be moved and, and what would happen in that situation.
So, um, our project manager has, uh, coordinated with all of the homeowners along the corridor and, and we've had a public, uh, open house regarding the improvement. So if I can follow up with you and get her name and number, just to make sure that, that we have already taken care of tho- those logistics, um, that'd be great. But I, I expect that Larry has probably already coordinated with her.
Okay. I'll send you an email with info.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, I ask for a motion to approve resolution 2017-40.
Aso moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Council President Menke and seconded by Counselor Rudin. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Um, we now move into ordinances and we have ordinance number 5025, an ordinance vacating a portion of Northeast Macy Street between Northeast 14th Street and, uh, Northeast 13th Street, uh, RV 1-17. I'll turn that over to Mike to, uh, to give a staff report to us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I've included a, uh, staff report in your packet that has outlined the process that we followed, uh, related to this vacation request. Also included for your consideration is the ordinance for adoption as, and, and a map of the area to be vacated. As you know, uh, the city had received a request regarding the vacation from the Amhill County Gospel Rescue Mission and from HR Birch Limited Partnership, the two property owners that are adjacent to the proposed. are adjacent to the proposed vacated area. At your main ninth meeting, you adopted a resolution setting the date and the time of this evening for a public hearing to consider that request. Subsequent to your adoption of the resolution, staff has posted the site with a notice regarding the proposed vacation. We've published the proposed vacation notice in the News Register as outlined by statute and we've mailed notices to adjacent property owners as shown on the vicinity map in your packet as well as to affected utilities that may have utilities within the corridor. As of close of business this afternoon, we'd received no objections to the proposed vacation. As you know, you had a brief hearing this evening regarding the vacation and received no testimony. We did receive comment from McMinnville Water and Light indicating they have utilities within the corridor. I would note the city has public sanitary and storm lines within the corridor as well. Therefore, the draft ordinance that's in front of you requests the retention of a public utility easement over the vacated area and that will satisfy both McMinnville Water and Light and the city as far as our utility needs. With that, staff would recommend adoption of the vacation ordinance as proposed.
Thank you, Mike. And as you'd indicated, we've, this has been before us and it's not, we've had some good discussion on that. But I'll turn any questions from councilors to Mike on this ordinance. Hearing none, I'm going to ask Dave to read the ordinance by title only.
This is ordinance Number 5025, an ordinance vacating a portion of Northeast Macy Street between Northeast 14th Street and Northeast 17th Street, sorry, Northeast 13th Street.
And could you read that again?
Sure. This is ordinance Number 5025, an ordinance vacating a portion of Northeast Macy Street between Northeast 14th Street and Northeast 13th Street.
Thank you. I'll ask Melissa to poll the council with Council President last.
Councilor Dropkin?
Aye.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye.
Councilor Stassens?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye.
This ordinance, ordinance 5025, passes unanimously and will take effect in 30 days. We have representatives from the Gospel Rescue Mission, so Kay, congratulations, Dave. Thank you.
Good to see you today.
And we talked a little bit about having Kay come back and give us an update at a later time. So Melissa, if you could connect with Kay, just so the council's updated with what's the good things happening there and that kind of reflects in our homeless approach too. So we'll have you in front of us and thank you. Okay, ordinance 5022, an ordinance approving a zone change from R2 Single Family Residential to R4 Multiple Family Residential on approximately two acres of land and a zone change from LRD 9,000 Low Density Residential, 9,000 square feet minimum, to R4 Multiple Family Residential on approximately 2.6 acres of land. We'll turn this over to Heather and to Ron to give us a staff report.
Oops. That's not what I wanted. So, good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. This is a land use decision that's in front of you. That's a recommendation from the Planning Commission. It is a recommendation for approval for two zone changes. You have the option tonight to take action or to direct us to notice a public hearing if you choose to do so for a future meeting. So the site we're talking about is a site that's bounded by Northeast Baker Street and Northeast Evans Street. The applicant is Premier Development and the property owner is John and Judith Borisma. The existing zoning on the site is, there's two acres of R2 land and then 2.6 acres of county zone, LDR 9,000. The proposed zone change in front of you is to take those two different zones and make it an R4 zone and for 4.6 acres approximately. In terms of a zone change review, that we do look at the zoning ordinance and compliance with the zoning ordinance, there's a three-part test for that. Is it consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan? Is it orderly and timely and considers the pattern of development in the area, the surrounding land uses and any changes that may have occurred in the neighborhood or the community to warrant the proposed amendment? And is it able to be effectively served with municipal utilities and services? Interestingly, there's also a caveat to that three-part test and that is that when the proposed amendment concerns needed housing, as defined in the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and state statutes, Criterion Two, which is looking at neighbor impact, shall now apply to the rezoning of land designated for residential use on the comprehensive plan map. So in this regard, our 2001 Housing Needs Analysis did identify the need for additional R4 land, about 140 acres, and since that time, we have rezoned about 48 acres. So this caveat does take place with this particular request. In terms of the comp plan policies and goals, we're looking at a high-density residential is typically includes townhouses, condominiums and apartments. It does allow though for single-family dwelling units, as we discussed at the affordable housing presentation. So there's allowance for all sorts of products on this type of zone land and the applicant hasn't brought to us a project that they want to develop yet. It's just really a zone change request. What we're doing is we're looking at sort of the highest use for this property. So we want to see if it has direct access from a collector or arterial street. We are recommending that it not have direct access from Northeast Baker Street, which is a minor arterial, but it does have direct access from Northeast Evans, which is a minor collector. That the area is not subject to flooding or poor drainage, that there's adequate service from existing facilities, there's access to public transit within a quarter mile. It's not geographically constrained and it can be buffered from low-density residential development. If you look at the map in terms of the surrounding land uses, those that are within the red line are a quarter mile and those that are within the yellow line are a half mile. The properties that are shaded in pink are multifamily, so there is a smattering of multiple family zoning and development in that area. Blue is schools and green is parks and we do want to see proximity to other amenities such as parks and schools for multiple family designations. This is a street classification map that shows that Baker and Evans, which border this property, are classified as a minor arterial for Baker and a minor collector for Evans. There was some concern about traffic impact for this, so the applicant did model intersections in terms of a traffic impact. With that, they looked, the TSP looked at a build-out to 2037 with this property zoned as R2. The traffic impact that was modeled with this zone change looked at it being modeled as R4 and it didn't show any significant changes to the intersections that you see there. And there were five that were studied for this. In terms of public testimony that occurred at the Planning Commission, this was hosted by the Planning Commission as a public hearing on April 20th. They didn't take action until May 18th. They closed the Planning Commission hearing, the public hearing on April 20th and elected to continue to deliberate because they had directed city staff to look at some additional conditions of approval and I'll share what those are with you. It was in response to some of the public testimony that they heard and some of the comp plan policies that they found, which they could use to address that. But the public testimony that evening, there were some that were in support of this project and they testified in support of it based on the need for this type of zoning in the community, the fact that it meets the comp plan and the zoning ordinance and the higher and better use for the property. There was also testimony that evening from surrounding neighbors expressing their concerns about sort of what I would call the upzoning, the higher impact of this property in terms of the impact to the neighborhood and the perceived impact. There was a lot of discussion about increased traffic and parking on Northeast Evans and North Baker Streets. There was some commentary about the change in the property in terms of zoning and that change in the neighborhood. There was commentary about whether or not the multiple-family development would be buffered from the adjacent single-family dwelling residential neighborhoods that were around it, whether or not the schools could take on the capacity of this upzoning and then that the R4 zoning would create a different type of neighborhood with increased traffic. So a lot of sort of anxiety about the unknown of how this would be developed in this higher and more intensive use and the impact to the neighborhood itself. Based on that, the Planning Commission asked us to look at a couple of recommended conditions. They asked us, they looked a lot at connectivity issues and wanted to ensure that there was a public sidewalk on Northeast Evans Streets that would be built with this new development, regardless of what the development is. We looked at that, that's a normal course of business. Anytime development takes access off of a street, the frontage for that street is improved to a complete street standard. So that would occur anyways in our process. So we didn't feel it was necessary to put a condition of approval on the land use decision for that. Another concern that Planning Commission had was to provide some future bicycle and pedestrian connectivity to Baker Street. So if it is developed as a larger multifamily complex in 4.6 acres, that there would be some connectivity to Baker Street if that, if that street is ever developed to an urban standard. So right now, it's a county road, it's improved at the county standard, it's within the city limits though. So if it is brought into the jurisdiction of the city and built to a complete street, we wanted to ensure there was connectivity to that. So we asked for a condition of approval on the land use decision that the design allow for that in the future if that ever occurs. There was some concern about making sure we prohibit vehicular access to Northeast Baker Streets, so that is a condition of approval as well in the land use decision. And then finally, there's concern about the buffering of this future, potential future multifamily development on the site with the adjacent single-family development around it, especially the development that's north and south of the site, which are single-family residences. So we looked at that and there's two recommended conditions of approval in the decision document. One is that the side yard setbacks shall be increased one foot for each foot of building height over 35 feet. So in this case, with taking frontage off of Evans Street, potentially the side yard could be the north and south boundaries of the site, which are the two sites, two boundaries right adjacent to single-family residential development. With a multiple-family development, it could go up to 60 feet in height and with only a six-yard setback, that's a pretty considerable impact on the single-family residences right adjacent to that. Currently in the code, it does have a buffering language in there that says for every height, for every foot over, for every two feet over 35 feet of building height, there's an additional one foot to the side yard setback. Because these are right next to each other and we don't have significant separation with roads and stuff like that, we wanted to change that and make it one foot for each one foot over, each foot of building height over 35 feet. So it will double that separation. And then there's also a condition of approval that talks about buffering that can be used on the northern and southern boundaries, either by landscaping or fencing or some sort of design standard in there that buffers this development. If it is developed as multiple-family from the single-family neighborhoods on the north and south. Again, it could be developed as single-family residential as well, so we wanted to make sure the condition of approval allowed for the flexibility on the site, but mitigated the highest, most intense development impact on the site. So with that, our staff recommendation is that based on the public record and the Planning Commission recommendation, the information that's been provided to you, the testimony that was provided at the Planning Commission level and the findings of fact and conclusionary findings that you have in Exhibit A of the ordinance, that you approve, adopt ordinance 5022, which would approve this zone change.
Thank you, Heather.
Did you have something to add?
Ron, anything?
No.
Okay. I'll just turn to council for any questions or comments that you might have. Alan?
Heather, you mentioned that the, there'd be full improvements, curb, gutter and sidewalk on Evans Street, just a matter of standard operating procedure. How about Baker Road taking into effect a future bikeway possibly, but is there full improvements on Baker also?
No, and I might have, Mike might be able to weigh in on this as well. He and I've had some conversations about it. Because it is a county road at this point in time, it's not under the city jurisdiction. Even though it's in the city limits, it's not, right now, it's not serving as an urban road, so it's not built to city standards. And so that's why we're not, and it's not, the development isn't taking access off the road. So because of those two issues, we're not feeling comfortable with the proportionality of requiring improvements on the road.
Any other comments?
So has the applicant responded to the conditions of approval and have any of the original opponents responded to the conditions of approval?
The applicant has responded to the conditions of approval and is accepting of them. We have not heard from any of the oppositional testimony relative to that. And the second meeting where we, where the Planning Commission continued the meeting date specific to May 18th to have their deliberation, I don't think we had as much of a turnout in the audience that was there that first night for the public testimony. There was considerable dialogue when the Planning Commission closed the public hearing about their concerns and what they would like to see written as conditions of approval. So people walked away that night knowing what they were.
Thank you, Remick. Any other comments? Heather, the question I have, as we move to a R4, are there parking requirements in the R4 or are the parking requirements specific to the type of dwelling that might be in an R4?
The latter. So the park, so our development standards will be specific to the type of product that's proposed on the zone that's allowed in the zone.
So any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a little bit of concern on Baker. What would it take to clarify what would be future standards that could be adopted to make that part of the subdivision for the improvement of Baker?
I'm going to defer that to Mike.
I'm not certain I understand the question. The transportation plan, system plan outlines what the facility will be improved to in the future, the minor arterial standard, but the site won't access the street and so there's not an impact from the site to the street. It's also incredibly inefficient for a corridor such as Baker that's not currently designed for improvement to try to build a small piece of it in the middle of an unimproved corridor. Vertical profile hasn't been set, horizontal profile hasn't been set, drainage facilities haven't been constructed. And so essentially, you're quite likely, if you require an improvement, if there was an impact that you needed to mitigate and could require an improvement, it's quite likely it would have to be rebuilt in the future when the entire corridor was improved.
Yeah, my thoughts behind it is that that whole corridor through there is more or less another gateway to McMinnville and it could sure use some sprucing up at that end and street improvements would surely make that look better because there's such a mix of use down there. And to see that kind of all flow together would be nice as a gateway to our city. But if it's not possible, it's not possible.
Yeah, with, so, and we've had internal discussions about that. With land use decisions, we're held to what's considered proportionality in terms of what we can require the developer for investment in public improvements. We didn't feel that this met that test, but we have had discussions, much like you just described, as okay, so for the future, how do we see something achieved on this road? And it may be something similar to Hill Road where it's a future city effort to do that.
Okay, thank you. But good point, Alan, because it is seen as a gateway coming in from the rural side of town, so.
To follow up on Alan's thing with Baker Street, has there been any conversation of absorbing that from the county like we're doing with Hill Road or is that down, way down the road?
To my knowledge, neither the City Council nor the Board of Commissioners have discussed the proposition of changing jurisdiction on that piece of Baker. It would be staff recommend that the council not accept jurisdiction until such time that it's improved, but to my knowledge, those discussions have not taken place.
And much like Hill Road, until we had money to make an improvement... And much like Hill Road, until we had money to make an improvement, we would just take ownership of maintenance of it and not be able to improve it up to those urban standards.
Kevin? So, I agree with Alan's comments, but I think my main concern is, and I don't really have a problem with the application, it's just the, the park that's out there is, it's a lovely park, but you can't walk to it. It's an incredibly dangerous place to even try to walk to. So, I think we need to kind of put a pin in that, that we've, that's, we need to do some planning and work with the county, hopefully to make that a little bit safer access, especially if we're going to be increasing the volume of people living pretty close to it.
And right now, I see that park as a drive-to park because it is so specific in nature as a nature park because once you go there, you're doing a lot of walking there.
Because of the street, I mean, it's, it's a, there's a lot of communities, there's a lot of neighborhoods very close to it, like right up to it, but you can't walk to it.
Right, a lot of apartments that could drop down, yes. Any other comments?
Only other question is, is it common practice that we rezone something before we know it's going to be built there? The only other.
Yeah, so, and Bron's really struggled with that, too. So, the history in McMinnville is probably no, but it's a normal planning practice, yes. And there's an allowance for it in the zoning ordinance. So, a rezone of property is common, is common, is probably more common than not common practice without a proposed development on it. In McMinnville, there's a history of using planned developments as rezones. So, you come in with a project, it's very specific, the zoning ordinance that's then approved is really specific about the conditions relative to that project. In this particular case, the applicant asked to come in and rezone the property that's allowed in the code and there's a process in which to review that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or discussion?
Will this rezoning, are the businesses that are there, will they go away then with this rezoning or can they continue there? Or are they already gone? Excuse me, I haven't been over that way in a while.
So, if, with the rezoning, if the businesses are not allowed in that zone, they will be considered non-conforming. They are currently probably considered non-conforming in the R2 and LDR 9,000 zone.
Okay, so, it sounds to me like they're planning to develop this fairly soon then if that's what the plan is.
Yeah, that's, that's up for the developer to disclose, I don't know, but.
Okay, just wondered.
Okay.
I like the project. I think it's a really good use of the property right there. And it falls right in line with the goals that we've tried to establish for affordability and so.
Thank you. With that, then, I'm going to ask David to read the ordinance by title only.
Make sure this isn't a planning director requirement. Okay, this is ordinance number 5022, an ordinance approving a zone change from R2, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential on approximately two acres of land and a zone change from LDR 9,000, low-density residential, 9,000 square foot minimum to R4, multiple-family residential on approximately 2.6 acres of land.
And Dave, if you'd read it again?
Yes. Ordinance number 5022, an ordinance approving a zone change from R2, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential on approximately two acres of land and a zone change from LDR 9,000, low-density residential, 9,000 square foot minimum to R4, multiple-family residential on approximately 2.6 acres of land.
Melissa, would you pull the council?
Councilor Drapkin?
Aye.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye.
This ordinance passes, ordinance 5022 passes unanimously and shall take effect in 30 days. Thank you. That takes us to ordinance 5023, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to section 17.53.101L, land division standards. Street grades and curves to allow local street grading up to and including 15%. We'll turn the time over to Director Richards to give a staff report. Heather?
Yes, Mayor, and I apologize, but just for a course of record, was there an official motion for adopting ordinance 5022?
Is that, that's what we just did, did we not?
There was a vote. I don't believe there was a motion.
Well, that was read by title only and then it was an ordinance?
There should have been a motion to, to.
Okay.
I said moved.
Okay.
Second.
So, it was, it was moved by Council Rudin and seconded by Council President Menke. And so, we can put that in now and then we're fine.
And then take, and then take the vote again. Go ahead and take that.
Okay. So, Melissa, if you'd pull us again, excuse me.
Councilor Drapkin?
Aye.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes unanimously, 5022, and shall take effect in 30 days. Thank you, Heather. You keep us where we need to be. Okay. We are now on ordinance 5023 and if you would give us the staff report.
Yes, so this, again, this is an action item that's in front of you for, based on a Planning Commission recommendation. It is something that you can send to public hearing if you so choose. At the Planning Commission level, there was one dissenting vote on this particular recommendation based on some of the public testimony and the, wanting to explore some of that a little bit further. So, I'll share that with you. But this is initiated by city staff and it's a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance to look at modifications to residential street grade standards and we're referencing this as steep streets discussion. So, why this is coming before you is because in recent years, we're starting to see more residential development occurring in McMinnville's West Hills. The West Hills have steep slopes and ravines that are resulting in street designs with greater street grades and for longer distances than have historically occurred in McMinnville. The top, the topography of this area is really challenging to design streets to the current street grade limitations. And so, it has brought us together a staff to talk about that and how to mitigate it and come to a solution on it. The current requirements in the land division chapter of the zoning ordinance for section 17.53.101 limits streets grades to 6% on arterials, 10% on collectors and 12% on any other street. The provision also states, though, that where existing conditions, particularly topography, make it otherwise impractical to provide buildable lots, the Planning Commission may accept steeper grades and sharper curves. I'll have to read through this. So, so what that means is we, I apologize, the software on here sort of made my PowerPoints a little cattywampus, so I'm winging this one. So, what this means is that this type of amendment, when it comes in front of a Planning Commission, is somewhat complex. And rather than leaving that at the Planning Commission to work through on a case-by-case basis as to, okay, what type of grades we want to allow for streets out there, we felt it was more important to really get all the partners and the engaged people impacted with that discussion and bring a recommendation to the Planning Commission that we memorialize in the zoning ordinance so that with every case, we're not going through the same practice. So, we gathered the fire department and the engineering department together and we did research with other communities to see what they're doing and what everyone would feel comfortable with from a public safety component. By researching other communities, we learned that a 15% maximum standard is not unusual. In fact, it seemed more like the norm than the 12% standard and Tigard allows up to 18% for some of their hills that they're developing on today. The graphic to your right there shows the steepest streets in the United States, one going all the way up to 45%. Most of those are in cities like San Francisco and Los Angeles as well. So, we're just showing that, that it, there is, there are other places where these, where residential development is occurring on steep slopes and relative to the 30s, 30% to 45%, we're talking about increasing from 12% to 15%. In your staff report, I provided an attachment that looked at other communities and their maximum grade. And to give you an example around the state of Oregon, the city of Beaverton is 15%, city of Cambie's 15%, city of Eugene is 20%, Portland 22%, Gresham 15%, Silverton 15%, Tigard 15% and Westland 15%. They all have some sort of framework in which that steeper grade can occur so that the fire department is able to access the residential developments that are occurring above that and other amenities can access it as well. So, we went to our fire department and had a conversation with them about what it, what it would mean in terms of developing on the West Hills and these steeper grades that are, that are coming out of that, out of that review and how much they were comfortable with in terms of their equipment and what they could safely navigate and then what would the parameters be that they would like to see in the code to ensure safety for all the people who would be living on the hill. So, our fire engines can safely navigate 15% grades in most weather situations. The engines can provide service on grades up to 12% without risking damage to their pumping systems. Once the engines are pumping on a grade higher than 12%, it could damage the system. So, when the engine stops, it needs to be stopping at a grade of 12% or less and deploying its hoses. The hoses can be deployed and pulled a distance of just over 100 feet. So, with that, the recommended language in front of you allows increasing the street grade from 12 to 15% but only doing that for 200 feet in length so the engines can park and bring the hoses inward for that 200 feet. A street section less than 12% grade must be provided between these steeper sections so that the engine can park and do that. And in your code, you'll see that we're recommending seven, at least a minimum of 75 feet for that. So, those are sort of the landing plateau, so to speak. And then the building department can require sprinkling of homes that are accessed by street grades exceeding 12% and that is the recommend, recommended language that's in the code in front of you tonight, that any home built above an access street over 12% would be, would be required to be sprinkled. The engineering department implements the Public Rights Way accessibility guidelines. They looked at that for recommendations requiring, for street grades, they felt comfortable with going up to 15%. The intersection grades, though, cannot exceed 5% and this also helps to create that needed fire department refuge. So, all the intersections will need to be at a grade of 5% and designing into that will also help create those refuges that the fire department needs. In terms of the public testimony, this was heard at the Planning Commission on May 18th, 2017. There was supportive testimony about it from the development community and others and basically summing that up, people felt that it was reasonable. So, we were, you know, we're being asked to build into the hills because that's not resource land in terms of farmland around McMinnville. And because of that request to build into the, into the hills, what can we do to ensure development can occur and incur in an efficient manner? And then the oppositional testimony was there was concern about the grade of the streets relative to safety. There was discussion from the neighbors that currently live in the West Hills that they see a lot of skateboarders there because it's, because of the steep streets and the skateboarders are coming to use that and there's conflict with them and vehicles on the streets. So, there's concern about that safety and there's concern about vehicular speeds. There was also concerns expressed from the public testimony about the ability for the fire apparatus and school buses to navigate these street grades. We did have the fire department there. They, they answered those concerns in terms of being able to do that. And we contacted the school district and they didn't express any concerns either. There was concern about whether or not all homes over 12% needed to actually be sprinkled. There was several developers in the audience and their question was, you know, if you're on one of those plateaus and the fire department can get there with their engine and stop and get to you, why would you need to sprinkle your home? After some discussion, the fire department still felt that they were more comfortable if the requirement existed for sprinkling homes for any home over access of 12%. So, the recommendations to you to amend the zoning ordinance is to allow street grades to exceed the 12% with a few caveats, that it shall be reviewed for approval by the fire code official during the land use application review process so we can catch it early. And then when, when it is approved to exceed the 12%, which is what the fire code official would do, that a maximum of 200 feet of roadway length may be allowed with a grade between 12% and 15% for any one section. And then that roadway grade must reduce to no more than 12% for a minimum of 75 linear feet. And then there's also the discussion about the fire sprinklers. Shall be installed in all residential and commercial structures whose access road is constructed at a grade higher than. So, our recommendation is that you approve ordinance 5023 based on this research and collaboration with partners who, public safety partners and users of the streets in terms of the development.
Thank you, Heather. Questions for our planning department? Alan?
Thank you, Heather. This is really a thorough look at this. Appreciate everything you've done with fire and streets and everything and the ADA ramps and those type things. Those are always challenges on those steep streets. So, under this, if this is passed, our new maximum would be 15 feet or 15% with the caveats.
Yes.
Again, thank you for everything that you've done putting in. It's, it's quite a challenge and on these streets. I imagine the public works department will have a heads up when it gets snowy and icy out there for sure, but it looks great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Any other discussions or question? Adam?
You had mentioned school buses, but in your presentation, there wasn't really any correspondence from the first student or whoever bus provider is. Were they consulted at all on their ability to get up and down those streets?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, they were provided opportunity to comment with a full copy of the application proposal and didn't share any concerns with us.
Okay, and my next question was, most of the fire was related to pumping water and engines, but I didn't see any mention of deploying the ladder truck on those steep grades. Typically, houses in the West Hills are more vertical than, in the northwest sector of the city and deploying ladders to get roof ventilation isn't really realistic from the homes that are currently over there. So, does our ladder truck have the capabilities to deploy on those 15% grades, knowing they wouldn't have that 100-foot reach? They wouldn't be able to park in that refuge area. Was there any communication about that?
So, they didn't bring up any concerns regarding that. I'm, and I'm not aware that they deploy their ladder trucks for residential structural fires. Typically, those are deployed for higher structures, but we've, we spent a lot of time with both Deborah McDermott, the Fire Marshal, and Chief Leifert, thank you, to talk about this code and what worked for them. So, we wanted to ensure that it worked for them and we asked them to look at their equipment and to different scenarios and come back to us with their recommendations. So, the language is coming from them, really.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I have a lot of concerns with this. The risk management insurance guy in my brain is just freaking out on this. I don't necessarily have a problem. I mean, I think we've mitigated a lot of the, the risk factors for the fire department and they've had a good say in this, but I don't, I really have, not all slopes are built the same and I, and I really have reservations of just doing it across-the-board allowance of 15%. I would, I would prefer that we look at the slope case-by-case basis and I, I just, in this hill in particular, it's very unstable. We've had landslide problems there in the past and, I mean, I would, when we start going up that steep, I would prefer to have like Dogami or somebody give a certification that this is buildable land because I just, I have a lot of reservations about that particular slope. So, I'm going to probably be a no vote on this one, but.
And if I may, Counselor, I might bring in the city engineer on this, but as we build the streets, they will all be built to the same standard in terms of compaction and grade and erosion, but.
Yeah, there's really nothing out of the ordinary designing a street grade at 15%. Pretty common and the geotechnical studies and. The geotechnical studies and work that would need to be done to make sure that the streets are built properly are going to happen regardless if it's 12% or 15% or 5%. And so, and then we also have provisions in our code that areas of fill have to be certified as buildable for lots and that the minor isolated slide that has occurred on this hillside was, is not indicative of the entire hill. I think it was a minor isolated slide and you'll have a future discussion this evening that has testimony and information in the packet related to the geotechnical work that was done related to that specific slide and that specific spot, but it's not indicative of that entire hillside.
Right, and I have responded to neighborhoods that were not expected to slide that have slid and there's no insurance for that kind of, for slide. There's no insurance for slide. So we try to keep people out of the floodplains and there's insurance for flood and we build houses on hills and there's no insurance for slides. I'm just, so I just am pretty opposed to building on steep slopes.
Okay. Adam?
Another question, and more from Mike, is the maintenance cost of maintaining roads on those steep and keeping them in good condition. What I'm going off of is the Twilger and Taylor's Ferry area up in Portland, which they do have not the best track record of road maintenance, but is that more of a, not the best track record of road maintenance or is it in such poor condition that because of the grade of the road?
Well, I don't know that you can tie the slope to a specific maintenance issue. I mean, each roadway is going to be different based on traffic loading, how it was constructed. Certainly a little more challenging to pave a road on 15% grade than it is to pave a road on a 5% grade, but it's done routinely. As Heather noted in her testimony, there, these grades we're talking about amending our code to meet are pretty much the norm across the state and in fact are in the national standards for recommended for residential street is a 15% street grade. And so it's nothing out of the ordinary and it doesn't require any special or unique construction techniques to be able to build. So beyond that, I mean, you're going to analyze what the soil is like underneath the road and make sure you build the right section and make sure it's constructed properly. And in the winter, you're going to have more snow and ice removal. This will amend our snow and ice removal routes to make sure that the steeper areas get priority, much like we've done in the other parts of the West Hills. So from a maintenance standpoint, it should be a minimal difference between the current standard and the proposed standard. And I guess the other thing I would point out is these grades are allowed under our current code. What Heather's doing is proposing making sure that there are specific conditions that if we are going to continue to allow these steeper grades, this is how it's going to be done. And so if anything, it's providing some specific parameters around what's already allowed within the code context.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly?
I just want to comment. I live on Mount Mazama near the top of it and that street and regularly go down Horizon Heights. I personally, the road maintenance has been excellent this year and it was a very rough winter. I have not seen any significant problems with it. A number of years ago, I think it was back in 2008 when we had that really heavy snow through the Christmas time. There was one night we couldn't get up there like Christmas Eve, but otherwise it's, we've not had any problems.
But that night, even those on the zero...
It was bad.
We couldn't get out if we were in a cul-de-sac, so...
So, you know, but the maintenance has been excellent. I have not had any problems. And I'm, after reading all the comments and things, I'm thinking, I need to go a lot slower, but...
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments? Wendy?
The report was excellent, so thorough and I really appreciate that. And just acknowledging that this is looking at just the street, how steep the street is, it's already an approved subdivision. I really appreciate how it's focusing that instead of leaving it wide open that the planning commission, that it really focuses the decision-making on that because it does take in all of the parties and I think that that's a really smart way to go when you're looking at, you know, give them some parameters from our experts. So I think it's a great application and I thank you for all your work on it.
Yeah, I want to compliment you too. It was really an excellent presentation. Thanks for all the departments that participated, but you were very well put together.
It's a team effort, but Ron led the team on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion. No move.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Council President Minkie. At this point, I will ask David to read the ordinance by title only.
This is ordinance number 5023, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to section 17.53.101 sub L, land division standards, street grades and curves to allow local street grades up to and including 15%.
Please read it again.
Ordinance number 5023, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to section 17.53.101 sub L, land division standards, street grades and curves to allow local street grades up to and including 15%.
Melissa, if you would take a poll?
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
No.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number... Mr. Chair? Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
Ordinance number 5026 was approved with five in favor, one in opposition and will be brought back to the council on June 27, 2017 for a second reading. Okay.
5023.
Oh, that's next time.
For the record?
You'll vote again next time.
Okay, that takes us to ordinance 5024, an ordinance amending planned development ordinance number 4868 to allow exception to current street grades, block length, block circumference and lot depth to with standard and to amend and approve residential subdivision and phasing plan on approximately 132 acres of land. We'll turn that over to our planning department again.
Yes, so Mayor, ironically, this follows the discussion you just had, but this is independent of that discussion. This is an ordinance to amend an existing planned development and it is submitted by West Hills Properties LLC. It was heard by the Planning Commission on May 18, 2017. They held a public hearing and they voted unanimously to recommend this for approval to you tonight. And what I failed to mention at the beginning of all this is we, you have an exhibit to each ordinance that has the decision document. The decision document has the decision, the recommended conditions of approval, the findings of fact and the conclusionary findings in them. So this is, the site for this is what we were just discussing out in the West Hills. It's north of West Second Street and west of Mount Mazama. The applicant is West Hills Properties LLC and the property owner is R&amp;B Cowery Investments LLC and BR House LLC. The existing planned development that's there, so there's already one that exists is for 164 acres. That was adopted by ordinance number 4868, approved on April 24, 2007. And this shows the existing approved phased development plan. So it does show how these hills will be built out moving forward. There already is some area that's been developed, the area that you see in yellow there. The developed area was Valley's Edge Phase 2, which has apartments, a public park, a detention pond and single-family homes and then Valley's Edge Phase 3, which has single-family homes. So that leaves a remainder of 132.2 acres to develop in this planned development. So much like we just discussed, this is the topographical map for that area. Hard to see, but just to share with you, the darker areas is very steep. That's the topographical line. So when the engineering team got, started really looking at the next phases for the subdivision and how to build them out and how to make them work within their standards, they discovered with the steep slopes and the different ravines that it was very difficult to build it to what was originally proposed. And so they are coming back with an amendment to that original proposal and then that amendment is requiring some variances in terms of our block lengths and our block circumferences and our lot width to depth ratios. So this is the proposed phased subdivision plan that looks at it from a perspective of an allowance of streets up to 15%. They worked with the fire department on this. So regardless of the previous action, which is a, still needs some vote and needs time to take effect, currently in the code, there is the allowance for the planning commission to work with a plan, to work through a development and make a recommendation to you for a development that exceeds 12% in terms of street grades. And so this is the development that brought forward to us as staff that we really should be looking at a standard for this as we build out the West Hills. But the developer was working with the fire department and the engineering department on this proposal as we went through that process. So to show you some of the differences, because they had to design it and achieve a maximum 15% grade, they did have to redesign several aspects of it. What you see in red are the connections that they had to remove from the original plan and then that created longer block lengths, long here in terms of the block circumference and the block lengths that need to have an amendment to them in terms of the planned development amendment. So the variances that we're looking at is street grades, so from 12 to 15%. Block lengths, there's 31 units that exceed the amended in that when the planned development was originally adopted, the block lengths then had a maximum block length of 1,802 feet. So it already was exceeding our 400 feet minimum based on the topography of the area. Now the request is to have a maximum block length of 1,895 feet. There are also 11 block circumferences that will now need to be amended as well and that in our code is 1,600 feet, but per the previous amendment, it had already been extended and now they're requesting a further extension on that. And then the lot depth to width standard, they're asking for a variance for that as well. In terms of the number of lots that are in this particular proposal, the total lots in the existing approved planned development was 512. Based on the redesign, the total lots in the proposed amended planned development is 552. So there are 40 more lots that are currently being proposed for this development. It's an R2 PD, so it's an R2 planned development. The maximum density allowed is six units per acre. It's achieving 4.6 units of net density per acre and 3.7 units of gross density per acre. So it's still under that maximum density. The minimum lot size in the new proposed planned development amendment is 5,292 square feet. The maximum lot size is 35,305 square feet. That is because of some wetlands and some ravines that need to be protected within the area and so some of those lots are larger for that. The average lot size is 9,547 square feet. The total single-family units will be 551 and the total multifamily units will be 68. The multifamily units have already been built. So again, the zoning ordinance criteria that we look at for a planned development amendment, the decision is whether or not, first decision is whether or not it's a major or minor amendment and that's a decision that we make administratively. It's a four-part test for that. So is there an increase in the amount of land in the subject site? Is there an increase in density, including the number of housing units? Is there a reduction in the amount of open space or are there changes to vehicular system which results in a significant change to the location of streets, shared driveways, parking areas and access? So in this regard, there are two of that four-part tests that come into play, so that's why it is going through a major planned development amendment process and is coming to you for a final decision. The criteria that we look at for a planned development amendment is are there special physical conditions? Is the resulting development, the resulting development is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan objectives of the area? Does it have adequate access to and efficient provision of services to adjoining areas? Can the plan be completed in a timely manner? Are the streets adequate to support the traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area? Proposed utility and drainage facilities are adequate and the noise, air and water pollutants are mitigated? So that's all the tests that we use when we're reviewing a planned development. The two that we have circled there are the two that came up in the public testimony discussion at the planning commission hearing that we wanted to share with you. So for, the planning commission received both oral and written testimony and held their public hearing on May 18, 2017. A summary of the testimony is that the supportive testimony was that it's an existing planned subdivision. So there was some oppositional testimony about that many dwelling units coming online in the city of McMinnville and, you know, that type of density, et cetera, et cetera, without the understanding that this is already an existing booked planned development so it can build as is. So the supportive testimony was it does exist, that there's need for more buildable lots right now in the city of McMinnville. Just as a reference point, we've issued 11 single-family dwelling permits since January here in the city. So there is a need right now for buildable land supply for residential development. The developer is a proven quality McMinnville developer that's well-known and is known for selling his lots, so making the lots buildable with infrastructure and then selling them to local developers to build out. So he contributes to that part of the economy and the requests appear reasonable and meet the criteria of the comp plan and zoning ordinance. It's always nice to hear people testify that way. The oppositional testimony was that there's concern, again, concern about the grade of the streets relative to safety. So can the fire apparatus get up it? Skateboarders and vehicular speeds, which we talked about with the steep streets discussion. There was concern about the amount of traffic that's now being planned to use Horizon Drive. So there's the existing conditions for Horizon Drive and then this new buildout on the hill is meant to be collected by Horizon Drive. It is identified as a minor collector, so how much traffic that will be sending to Horizon Drive was a concern of the neighborhood. There was a concern about water capacity and pressure above the 275-foot line. So right now, we don't have the infrastructure in place to be able to serve residential development above 275 feet. Mack Water and Light was at the public hearing with the planning commission and addressed that. So no building will be allowed above that 275-foot line until that additional infrastructure is built and that is in the planning Horizon for Mack Water and Light. And then there's concern about soil erosion on the hill as it's built out and that was some dialogue that we just had. There was an occurrence of a slide that happened in this area. There was a geotech report provided for that. So based on the discussion that we had at the planning commission level, there was a new condition of approval that was put into the decision document for you to consider and it's the recommendation that all new residential permits that are pulled in this development, it will be the building officials prerogative to require a geotech report specific to that building permit to ensure that that work is done in terms of the additional geotech analysis. So we also have one other additional conditional approval that was developed as part of the planning commission motion and that was a lot of discussion about connectivity. It's hard to see in this map, but as this was done in 2007, there's some policies in the comp plan that talk about pedestrian connectivity and we're talking about over 400 housing units in this area. So how, with the longer block lengths and the longer block circumferences, how does, you know, children from a house in A get to children in a house around, all the way around the block to building B? So the planning commission was very thoughtful and talked a lot about what the comp plan policies allow in terms of exactions and where it made the most sense to have that type of connectivity. The motion that they made was very specific about where they wanted to see connections made between this street and this street. The developer agreed to what was being requested of that. We met with the developer after the planning commission public... We met with the developer after the planning commission public hearing and sat down and mapped that out so that you would have that available to you, so you could see it. It is a recommended condition of approval by the planning commission and it is one that's been accepted by the developer. So that's coming to you from the planning commission as an addition. So with that, I know the developer and his team is here in the audience tonight as well. But with that, that is the staff report for this.
Comments?
I have a question. I think it's for Mike. So with the residents above 275 feet, what it says in the staff report repeatedly is the that these residents would either need to be serviced by a private water pump or by a second-tier water reservoir system to be constructed by McMinnville Water and Light at a higher elevation at a later date. So how does that process go in terms of what would trigger McMinnville Water and Light looking to add a second reservoir? Or you hear where I'm trying to lead is...
Yeah, I'll touch on it briefly and then perhaps Mayor Hill might have some additional context because he's involved with the Water and Light Commission and the Water and Light's plans for expansion for the second level. Essentially, when a development in this area will occur, there'll be a plat that needs to be recorded and that plat's going to identify where the service level is. And McMinnville Water and Light's not going to sign the plat saying that water's available to any lots that are above that line until such time as the system is built out. And so that's the controlling factor to ensure that lots aren't developed and sold without water service. And then beyond that, it becomes part of McMinnville Water and Light's master planning process and whatever financial process they set out to develop the second-level reservoir system will happen at the Water and Light Commission.
And I'm going to look, Sam is here. And he's going, "No." I don't know that we've very specifically had these discussions for this, but if my memory serves me correctly, we've talked about capacity and accomplishing that through a pump and being able to build pressure back up through the use of pump.
Yeah, I understand that they have a site secured to build a future reservoir on. And then it's just a matter of development of the water system, including a pump station from the current reservoir site up to the new reservoir, the development of a reservoir, and then the distribution system to serve that upper level. It's pretty common in most communities. It's, we're fortunate in McMinnville that we're entirely served by gravity, except for this little area that's above that magic line.
So would it be once there were a certain number of lots that were ready to be built that that would kind of initiate that process? Or does this development alone bring in enough demand to warrant that?
Those are all great questions. Those will be issues that the commission will have to struggle with. You know, how is that second level going to be developed from a cost standpoint? And who bears that cost will be a decision that the commission has to make as they're the purveyors of our water system.
And would it also be, they could also decide to not pursue a second reservoir?
I think they'd have to come up with some alternative because Water and Light is to deliver water within the city limits. Okay? And so I'll give you an example of the Hill Road development. It wasn't on Water and Light's long-term plan to underground all the things that are going to be done out on Hill Road. But because of the city's development of that, we had as a commission to take a look at it and said, "This is the time to do it. It's a prudent thing to do." We had to move money that was in the capital plan and not necessarily for undergrounding, but we did that happily, you know, because we were trying to provide the service that would be required with the things that were happening out on Hill Road. So I don't know if that makes sense, but they are under obligation to provide water and light to the residents of McMinnville in the city limit.
And so any parcel within city limits, if it's applicable for any type of development, then that service has to be provided.
That's the customer service that we give. Again, there's that piece of property on the west side of Hill Road, out just south of Baker Creek, that is outside of the city limits, that no water was provided there. And so they had to do their own wells. So we don't provide water, electric outside, some electric, but not water outside of the city limits.
Okay. Yeah, so per Oregon state law, we have to show how we're going to provide through our public facilities, infrastructure to serve all land within the city limits. So that's our public facility planning. And Mack Water and Light has a water master plan that shows that. Timing for it is something else, and what triggers that timing, I think, is your question in terms of those improvements.
Right. And how many lots are above that mark in this plan, above the 275?
Do not.
Or approximately?
No.
Just generally?
Sounds like half-ish.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Kelly?
I just wanted some clarification. There's a, it's come up a couple of times, and I noticed it going through the writing on this, that there's a lot of drainage areas and stuff like that in particular. Are those going to stay open?
No. And the applicant does a much better job explaining the drainage areas than I do with their mapping. But the drainage, there are a lot of drainage areas on the hills. And right now, the way it's designed, they are all encaptured in private property. Now, they're protected, so they'll be retained and protected, but they do run through private property.
Well, the question is, are they going to put big pipes through them, cover them over and do it that way?
No.
Will they stay open?
They will stay open.
Okay.
There are state laws that govern how that's monitored.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had that discussion initially, kind of where that ravine that went down and they did the culvert underneath and kind of drained in the holding. That's how I see it happening because it went down the property lines and some people have a creek running down their property line.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was many years ago when they started out.
Okay. Yeah, no, I remember the wetlands discussion and that, but this is kind of different from that.
Okay. Other discussion, Alan?
Yeah, I think that open greenways, I think that's a real key component of the whole subdivision. So I congratulate the applicants for keeping the integrity of that. That's really good. I had one question. On the pedestrian access ways that were added in on that one map, are those built for public safety vehicles also?
No. So a lot of those are going to be stairwells based on the grades. And so they will, they'll be maintained and owned by the HOA, but will be public access. But they will be stairwells.
So that's one question I had is, I'm sure this has been circulated through the departments, but the public safety vehicle is being able to access this whole neighborhood in a reasonable amount of time without getting lost and...
Yeah, so again, the fire department did review and respond. In fact, there was a lot of conversation between the development team and the fire department on the ability of the fire department to respond. And so they are comfortable with the final plan.
Okay. Well, I think it's a great project. It's been years in the making. I remember this 20 years ago or whatever, but congratulate the applicants for getting it to this point.
Okay. Other comments, questions? To my left?
Question for Matt. With those extremely large blocks, is there any issue with containment? If you guys are chasing a finched jumper through there and you got an 1,100-foot-long block to try and get around with another officer? It's corporate effects. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? To my right?
One more, actually.
What's that?
Is there anything as far as like, I know Fred already left, but garbage service, is that like these steep-grade roads, is that an issue? Or no, for development?
Just on Glass Day. This person's going to be really heavy, I think.
Slide doesn't know. I don't know when we're going to come.
I think yard debris can be heavier sometimes, so...
So again, we didn't get any comments from ecology.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, to repeat again my objections that I stated previously, I don't agree with moving development into these types of slopes. So I'll be a no vote on this.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Any other comments? Then I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Counselor Stassenz. And so I'll ask David to read the ordinance by title only.
It's the first reading of ordinance number 5024 and ordinance amending plan development ordinance number 4868 to allow exceptions to current street grade, block length, block's circumference, and lot depth to width standards and to amend an approved residential subdivision and phasing plan on approximately 132 acres of land. And Mr. Mayor, given the stated opposition to this, I'd advise that we forego the second reading and vote until the next meeting.
Okay.
I will be a no vote at that meeting as well.
Understood, but the charter only allows for both readings to occur on the same night if it's unanimous vote of the council. So we have to delay action to a second meeting.
So given the fact that there is opposition, we will have a second reading at the council meeting on June 27th, 2017 at that time.
And a vote.
Okay, and a vote.
You can do a vote on the first reading, but we'll forego the second.
Okay, no second reading. So we'll turn, Melissa, if you pull the council.
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
No.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
And so ordinance number 5023 was approved in five in favor, one in opposition. Will be brought back to the council on June 27th, 2017 for a second reading. That takes us to the concluding ordinance of this evening. 5026, an ordinance amending the McMinnville municipal code provisions incorporating a local transient lodging tax. Ordinance number 5003, 4994, 4974, and 4970. And so, Marsha, I will turn it over for a staff report from you.
Actually, I believe our city manager is going to give the staff report on this this evening.
City manager. Excuse me.
No, no problem, Mayor. Mayor, members of the city council, this ordinance is before you. Based on the consensus direction we received from you at your previous council meeting, based on presentation and request from Visit McMinnville, the ordinance before you contemplates two changes to the code. One is to apply the city's current transient lodging tax to RV parks and campgrounds. And the second is to increase the rate from 8% to 10%. The ordinance that's before you tonight would implement both of those changes effective August 1st.
Thank you. Discussion at this point, I know we had some discussion around our dinner table tonight. And so Adam, would you like to start out and share your concern with one aspect?
Yeah, so no concerns with it going from 8 to 10. The concern that I have is that we would follow the precedent established when the TLT was first enacted with ordinance 4970 back on that June 11th, 2013 vote and carry that precedent forward, making any new partners, which would be the RV and the campgrounds, come onboard and start collecting that tax effective January 1, 2018. Per 4970, all of our current TLT partners came onboard January 1, 2014 after that June 11th passage. And given today's the 13th, I feel that that precedent's pretty much matched almost 100%. And I would like to see that extended to our new partners coming onboard. For me, I just feel that giving a business model 45 days to decide how they're going to implement that into their business model, if they're going to pass that on to their customers, or if they're going to absorb that, is a substantial ask from a government body. And I think giving them six months that lets them properly plan for that without annihilating their customer base or having a bad taste of city government in their mouth.
Thank you, Adam. Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I do have some concerns as well. I, there are a couple of different avenues. Let me first say that I agree with Adam. I think it would be wise of us to replicate the process that happened last time if this were to pass. And certainly I'm compassionate as a small business owner that if I had that significant of an increase and only 45 days to incorporate it, it would be quite cumbersome. So I think having a, if this does pass, having a period, a grace period for those new partners would be good. I have some concerns about the increase to 10% that, only in that they, I think in the presentation last time, they put us as one of the highest taxing municipalities on these transient lodging taxes, if I remember correctly. It was mostly, we're at eight now, it's mostly eight, nine, and the top is really 10%. So I think that does have an effect a bit on what some lodging prices can look like. Certainly, we don't want to limit the travelers that are, the people that are visiting here. We don't want it to, we don't want to be pushing people away if they don't have additional monies to be spending on our taxes. And then lastly, I would raise the same concern that I raised last time, which while I recognize that we can't immediately adopt budget changes, such as I had previously suggested, that that suggestion was reiterated tonight by Mark Davis, which is the suggestion that we would take these additional revenues, which, as he pointed out, a lot of these are coming from units that previously were affordable housing units in McMinnville. And similarly, with the inclusion of the RV parks, while it may be, while I understand the 30-day timeline, that does not preclude that as a potential housing, a potential lower-income housing. So the concern then is that we are putting that money into the general fund without giving it a specific location. And the reason that causes me concern is because we have so many needs across our city. And one department, you know, we've tried to address departmental needs through the budget up to this point. And this money, were this to pass, is bonus money in a sense, right? Unplanned income at this point. And it is also an amount of money, or projected amount of money, where... or projected, uh, amount of money where, um, uh, it can make a big impact and it can also not make a big impact, uh, not to be unclear, but, um, there are, i- it is enough money that, um, we could, uh, leverage it, um, as we move forward in our, uh, goal to bring in community partners and get, um, outside investment into providing additional housing, um, and, uh, i- it's also not enough money that it could necessarily fund any other given project that I'm currently aware of, not saying that they're not out there. So, um, I really would like to see us designate, um, the city's portion of this additional two percent, uh, to go towards, uh, affordable housing or projects geared towards homelessness, and I recognize the amount of development that that would take and that it would take management, um, but I would very much like to see that, especially as I see homelessness especially, but also affordable housing draining, uh, resources from all of our departments. So, um, those are my thoughts. I realize that's not gonna get in there tonight before we vote on this, um, but, uh, I feel it's important to, to voice that again, um, and that we, we do have a lot of potential, um, relief that we would like to be able to get other, uh, whether it's nonprofits or, um, any various number of community partners involved in. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Other, uh, comments, discussion?
Mayor, just a quick note, uh, thanks, um, to Remy for highlighting that issue. Um, while the counselor's correct, uh, that this action wouldn't necess, would not, uh, direct funds to be, uh, set aside for affordable housing or homelessness issues, uh, we likewise would propose that until the council has that discussion and decides how to spend this money, that the money would be placed in reserve, so it wouldn't be available to be expended on other purposes at this point. So just, I should have highlighted that in my, um, in my introduction.
No, thank you. I, I read that, but I forgot it, so thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, I, I'll say that I, I do support what Remy's saying with regards to financial, that this might be a really good fit, and I like the idea. I know that we're, we have a date that we're looking at starting strategic planning for funding, so I'm looking forward to having more of an in-depth discussion, and thank you for bringing that up and keeping it on the forefront.
Alan?
I, I agree with Remy on this. Uh, to be used, uh, for other, such the purpose she's talking about, um, rather than, um, taxing locals, so to speak, uh, through, uh, construction excise taxes, um, there could be a wide range of disparities, you know, of amounts that we'd get from each one, but I like what Remy has to say, I'd support something like that, once we get to those discussions.
Okay. A, 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 a thought that I might have is, I think as Wendy addresses it, how critical this will be a part, a discussion part of our strategic financial planning. I think that's the place to address it, and, and, and we can pull at that point. I hate to see a, uh, ordinance have, uh, a piece that would be, could limit at some point some other directional ta, types of things that could come before us. But I think in our financial strategic planning is the place to put that, that note and say, it's, it's one of our top, it's one of our top issues, and we, and as, as Jeff has said, that being put aside, that it wouldn't be necessarily used, we could then give some direction, just from my budget, my, my budget, long-term nature in the budget, that seems more cleaner, it gives us a lot more flexibility than to baking it into an ordinance that really could limit us in a time where we would really need it, maybe 'cause our directions might change. Just a thought.
It, it feels like it's important to see all the needs on the table and see all of the sources of funds when we're deciding.
Okay. Well, I will ask for a motion. I so move.
Well, I move with the recommendation with the modifications that, uh, Adam suggested for extending it six months, so they have that.
For RV and campgrounds?
For RV and campgrounds.
Yeah. So the, the, if I could just get some, if I could just get some clarification, um, there, there are two proposed changes in the ordinance. One is a change, uh, section five point one oh point oh one oh of the McMinnville Municipal Code, uh, which, um, would, would bring camping sites and recreational vehicle sites into the, in, uh, as being, uh, lodging providers subject to the tax, and the proposal would be to make the ordinance, that portion of the ordinance change effective January first, two thousand eighteen, as opposed to thirty days from adoption.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And then the other would be, uh, moving, uh, a two percent increase.
And then the two percent increase would take effect from eight percent to ten percent would take effect within thirty days, that would be?
August.
Okay.
RV comes onboard there at the ten percent rate.
Okay.
David?
Yes?
I make one other thing that just popped in my mind, is we're assuming that the operators of these parks are gonna be honest and, and charge the eight percent, not the ten, uh, I mean, uh, or not charge any, or start charging the ten percent right away, uh, when they, there's this grace period for them to go six months. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
That they start collecting revenue, uh?
Yeah, you'd have, I think you'd have a very hard time, uh, uh, collecting tax money out of stated area and only turning in, that's against the law.
I know, but people, people do stuff.
Okay.
Alan, uh?
Maybe some criminal laws implicated in fraudulently.
They're innocently, okay.
Well, they'll, they'll get a notice letter that'll indicate, that there was a notice letter in the packet.
We're auditing right now on a, on a limited basis too, aren't we? Uh, Marcia?
Uh, when, the last, uh, amendment to the ordinance, um, did provide that, uh, we could use our discretion as far as, uh, doing our auditing. We work, we do work with the planning department, uh, to, uh, identify vacation home rentals, for example, that have not, uh, registered for the transient lodging tax, and actually their permit is conditional on them registering to pay the transient lodging tax. Um, so I, when we talked about this with the city manager, um, and I would ask him to, uh, comment on that, that we decided because of the change in ordinance that we would defer, um, the audits. Did you have anything to add to that, Jeff?
I think a couple of issues in play. I mean, the, the issue of auditing is for properties that are subject to the tax to ensure that they're properly reporting and collecting and remitting the taxes. We'll still, still do that periodically. Uh, we'll make clear in our notification, should this ordinance pass to the owners of the RV park, that they are not under any obligation nor will we be attempting to collect any tax from them until January first, two thousand eighteen. They have the ability to set rates and collect money for their property, just as any other lodging provider has.
So they could charge a tax and not declare it for the first six months?
Well, uh, uh, as, um, uh, not the specific kind of tax, but, um, having to collect, uh, taxes for other reasons and from other municipalities and, and other states, um, and report those. Um, I, I, I know that the reporting that typically goes on the way that, that it, it plays out, that you, um, you want to actually be quite careful to never collect more tax than you're paying in. I, I, I can't, I can't speak to this type specifically, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's a felony, so.
Yeah.
It would be, I think.
Yeah, so I, I think that there's a motivating factor there to honestly collect and, and report, and I'm sure Counselor Garvin would love to inquire and, and try to book some spaces throughout the next.
I do have an RV.
Yeah.
Okay, as we stand right now. On ordinance fifty twenty-six, I have, it has been moved as amended by, uh, Councilor Rudin and seconded by Council President Minkie, uh, um, and so we'll call on David to read the ordinance by title only.
First reading of ordinance number five zero two six and ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code provisions incorporating a local transient lodging tax, ordinance numbers five zero zero three, five nine nine four, five nine seven four and five nine seven zero, sorry, four nine seven zero.
And a second reading?
Uh, ordinance number five zero two six and ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code provisions incorporating a local transient lodging tax, ordinance number, ordinance is number five zero zero three, four nine nine four, four nine seven four and four nine seven zero.
And Melissa, will you pull the council?
Councilor Drabkin?
Aye.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye.
Councilor Stassen's?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Uh, ordinance fifty twenty-six passes unanimously and will take effect in thirty days, and in reality, it will take effect August first. Um, that takes us through our ordinances this evening. Um, this is our time for advice and information, so reports from counselors on their committee and board assignments that would like, anyone would like to report out, and so, Adam, I'll just start with you.
Uh, why come we met Thursday last week and just adopted our budget with the three percent increase? Nothing out of the ordinary going on there? Just short and brief.
Kevin?
No news.
Kelly?
Hi, uh, the Wayfinding Committee, which is part of the, uh, Visit McMinnville, uh, met, and, uh, this was our second meeting, very constructive, kinda determined the public areas versus the, and then discussion of various topics. Uh, there's going to be an additional wayfinding meeting, and I'm sorry, I'm not remembering precisely the date, it seems like it's the night, nineteenth. At any rate, which is just a local grouping, am I, you weren't there, I'm sorry.
I was there.
Heather, do you remember? At any rate, they're going to refine this and then they will meet with the, uh, wayfinding, uh, the people that are sponsoring the committee and, uh?
And the contract, the contract was signed with Sea Reach, correct?
With Sea Reach, yeah. Sea Reach will join us, the group then, uh, later in the month and, and sometime in July. The only other thing is Parkway, uh, we all got called up on last Tuesday to go to the Capitol, and we had a very nice conversation with our representative Noble and a number of other, uh, representatives, and talked to them about how much we needed seventy-eight million dollars to, uh, do the right-of-way design and engineering and stuff like that for the first part of phase two.
And Parkway meeting we have Thursday morning. I likewise had an opportunity on, um, before I left on vacation to go with, uh, Dave Hugelberg and Mike Rigsdale, and we met with Senator Boquist, um, Representative Noble and, uh, Representative Byers, and at that point, uh, we are in the secondary funding stream, um, and right now it looks like we'll be receiving twenty-two million, um, along with our ten million that we'd saved from phase one, and we're going to need somewhere around, somewhere between eighty and ninety million to do the right-of-way and the design. Uh, the representatives and the senators said, be happy that you're in it. If there's extra money, at least you're kind of there, but we are as close to shovel-ready project across the state. We could be, we could be, we could be ready if the dollars were there with design and with, um, right-of-way closer than any other project that they have on the table.
What we're trying to do is get ready for the federal grant funding for the FAST program.
And I think, uh, I, I looked at the agenda for Thursday morning, and we're going to have a, a federal representative, we're making a phone call back to Washington to talk to someone to see kind of where we're at. So we're moving forward, but it's a slow process. Uh, Wendy?
Um, we had an urban renewal advisory committee meeting, um, we had two really good facade improvement, um, grants that we gave. One was for Duraldi's building, uh, it's really a neat upgrade, they're gonna do paint and new signage and, um, it's, it's a great, uh, great, uh, facade improvement. And then there's one over on Fourth Street, um, which is the new, uh, the owners of the Bitter Monk are opening up a new microbrew over there, um, and they have LED lighting that, um, isn't functioning currently that they're, they wanted to, um, replace, so we give a facade improvement for that, so the signage is more visible. Um, and we had updates on Alpine Avenue, um, there has been some concern expressed about parking, uh, during construction that Heather discussed that they're addressing, uh, but things are moving forward on that. Um, at the Atticus Hotel, we had an update on, um, they had, had an event, um, just recently, hear what the turnout was, but they're moving forward, and, um, the parking study is currently underway. We probably will have, and some news of what, um, comes of that maybe the next meeting. Uh, and the Third Street Improvement Project, we're gonna be moving ahead with starting to put together, putting out feelers for, um, members of that, um, of an advisory committee for that, for how we're gonna move forward on that, so it's in the very early stages, but we're, that's part of our discussion as well. So that was basically all we covered.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, Remy?
Um, the, uh, Subcommittee on Homelessness met yesterday, um, and was able to bring in various members of, um, our faith-based community to talk about some of the ideas that are percolating that were, uh, mentioned earlier, um, and, and that was, uh, a very, um, well-received and, and wonderful, um, to have those discussions and, um, more to come soon.
Thank you, Remy. Alan?
Scott, I had a question, is the fundraising for the bypasses, is that, uh, at this point strictly for the second phase, uh, which would go from?
Well, uh, y- yes, uh, it, it's primarily for second phase, 'cause they've limited our dollars. If it were for phases two and three, would be upwards over three hundred million to do right-of-way and design and, and for that, for that, for the, the two phases. So although we're talking about finish what you've started, but we are, we're very understanding that it's phase two that we're trying to fund.
Bring Brooke to Rex Hill.
To Rex Hill.
Um, the only thing I got besides, you know, with affordability and homelessness is Jay Pearson's retirement party next week, the twenty-first. Thought I'd bring that up. Probably all got emails.
Uh, four thirty to five thirty at the community center. I'll double check the entry at that rate.
Thank you, Alan. Department heads, chief? Marcia? Scott? Uh, Heather?
So I do have one thing, um, it was in the paper today, I had intended to tell you about it tonight, so apologize for that, but, um, the University of Oregon's Green Cities Program has chosen the city of McMinnville to focus their curriculum on this summer. Uh, we're gonna be looking at the Three Mile Lane corridor. It's fifty students, they come in, they do a design charrette with property owners and stakeholders. Uh, each student does their own report on a topic relative to, uh, planning issues as, in that corridor, and the report is both written and multimedia, so they bring drones in, they'll work with the airport on that, do drones at various different levels and provide aerials and videos to us, and that will all be under our ownership. So we'll try to leverage that. We also applied for a, um, hundred and ninety thousand dollar Transportation Growth Management Grant to look at that corridor with ODOT as a partner in the future, um, and we'll try to leverage that effort by the students into that larger effort if we get the grant.
Thank you, Heather. Mike?
Our, uh, bid opening for the Hill Road Project is Thursday, so, um, wish us well on that. I'm a bit nervous, we continue to have quite a bit of interest in that project, but talking to my peers around the state, uh, prices are going up and contractor availability's going down, so cautiously optimistic on that. And then, uh, just a gentle reminder, as you're out and about talking transportation projects with state folks, it's always good to put in a plug for a certain ODOT bridge that needs replaced in town that is basically completed with design, that by the end of this calendar year, they're supposed to have a completed design, but they don't have thirty million plus to build it, so.
Okay.
Is it, it wouldn't be harmful to put in a plug for a needed bridge replacement in McMinnville when you?
And I think that's wise to update us and have some talking points, because we're going back on, on the bypass quite a bit, but we're, we're having conversations with Boquist and, and. going back on the bypass quite a bit, but we're having conversations with Boquist and Noble quite a bit, and both of them have seats on transportation in some form or fashion.
Is that on the, in the transportation plan, do you know?
Not in, not in the existing one right now.
What do you call your spouse?
Just get Boquist to vote for the funding package. He's the only.
Melissa? David? Jeff?
Nothing worked.
Okay. I'm going to close our regular council meeting, but we're going to open just briefly an urban renewal agency to go over the budget for that. So I'll close the council meeting. I'm going to open up a public testimony of the Urban Renewal Agency and call for anyone in the audience that would like to address the Urban Renewal Agency's budget for 2016 through, 2017, 2018 fiscal year. Anyone like to address that, our budget that was adopted? Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing and comments. We're adjourned.